It's time to carry around.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on. I'm going to be presiding over tonight's meeting, although Council President Patraro is joining us remotely. Via a little thingy green that's keeping him from being at the meeting this evening. But he will be participating, but it made more sense for me to resign over it since we're all in person. So we'll get started. Good evening and welcome to City Hall. Tonight, we hold a regular twice monthly meeting of the Westminster Mayor and County Council. Please note that our meetings are available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. I'd like to thank the Media Center for providing that service. As a courtesy to everyone, take a moment to silence your phones or anything else that might make some noise. That would be fantastic. And now, as we begin every meeting, we start with a pledge and a moment of silence following the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America. And to the Republic which is the land, one nation under God, and that is the law, the Constitution, and the Constitution. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council has been using are available online on the city's website. And there are some copies on the chair in front of the room if anybody would have a copy. I have a statement to make. For the record, we held a closed meeting on Monday, September twenty eighth, in accordance with the general provisions of Article Section three, three oh six C subsection two of the annotated Code of Maryland. And without objection, it is noted that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that the common council met in a closed meeting on Monday, September twenty eighth, at four oh five P M pursuant to the general code three dash three oh five B subsection one to discuss the appointment employment, assignment promotion discipline, demotion compensation, removal resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, and any other personnel matters that affect one or more specific individuals, and subsection B seven to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Following staff members were in attendance, city administrator Impulse and city attorney Jordan. The common council took official action during this meeting. Closed meeting adjourned at six thirty P M. And we have no presentations this evening. We do have four sets of minutes that we need to approve. We have minutes for the mayor council meeting on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, the mayor and common council meeting of September eleventh, twenty twenty three, a special mayor and common council meeting of September eighteenth, twenty twenty three, and the mayor and common council closed session meeting minutes of September eighteenth, twenty twenty three. Have a motion to approve those minutes, please.
Motion to approve.
Second, Councilman Dayhoff with the motion and Councilwoman Gilbert with the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guys have it, motion's passed. We have two items on the consent calendar this evening. Like to have a motion to approve the consent calendar, please.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Councilman Huff. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Gilbert. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we close, we'll close, the motion is passed. We have two public hearings this evening, and public hearings in the city of Westminster are run by our mayor. Mayor Becker, the gavel is all yours.
Thank you, sir. Um, so the public hearing ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero six cannabis overlay district. And I'll note the start time as seven oh four. Ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero six cannabis overlay district and ordinance of the mayor and county council of Westminster. Adopting a sectional map. Amendment to repeal the former medical cannabis overlay district and designate the boundaries of the new cannabis overlay district for the purpose of establishing the appropriate locations for the designation of cannabis overlay floating zones permitted in the operation of cannabis businesses within the city. Anyone like to comment? Mr. Depot, do you have anything to add to that?
I just want to update just where we are from the last introduction by Mayor Common Council. That's okay. So on August fourteenth, twenty twenty three, the Mayor and Common Council did introduce ordinance twenty twenty three oh six and referred the ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and recommendation to the Mayor and Common Council. On September twenty first, twenty twenty three, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing ordinance twenty twenty three oh six and forwarded a recommendation to approve the ordinance to the Mayor and Common Council as introduced by the Mayor and Common Council on August fourteenth. The Mayor and Common Council noticed a public hearing to be held on today, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, for ordinance twenty twenty three oh six was advertised on September third and September tenth in the Carroll County Times. The Department of Community Planning and Development recommends that ordinance twenty twenty three oh six cannabis overlay district map amendment provided in attachment one of this report, and as introduced by the Mayor and Common Council on August fourteenth, twenty twenty three, be approved by the Mayor and Common Council. And that completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions or comments? If not, I will close this public hearing. We will move on to public hearing number two. Public hearing ordinance number twenty twenty three zero seven dash zero seven art galleries, studios text amendment. Ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero seven art galleries, studios text amendment and ordinance of the mayor and county council of Westminster, amending chapter one sixty four zoning and subdivision of land of the code of the city of Westminster to amend Article eight A C dash C Central Commerce Zone, section one sixty four dash forty five point two, Article seven B D B Downtown Business Zone, section one sixty four dash forty five point eight, and Article nine C B Central Business Zone, section one sixty four dash forty seven to add art galleries and studios. Mr. Depot, would you like to add anything to this, please?
Yes, thank you. So again, on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, the Mayor and Common Council introduced ordinance twenty twenty three oh seven, a text amendment to add art galleries and studios as a permitted use in the C C, D B, and C B zoning districts, and referred the ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and recommendation to the Mayor and Common Council. On September twenty first, twenty twenty three, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty three oh seven and forwarded a recommendation to approve the ordinance to the Mayor and Common Council as introduced by the Mayor and Common Council on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. The Mayor and Common Council noticed a public hearing to be held today, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, for ordinance twenty twenty three oh seven was advertised on September third and tenth of twenty twenty three in the Carroll County Times. With that, the Department of Community Planning and Development recommends that ordinance twenty twenty three oh seven art gallery studios text amendments provided in attachment one of this report and is introduced by the Mayor and Common Council on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, be approved by the Mayor and Common Council. And that completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this ordinance? There are none, we will close that. Hand that back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moving on, let's move on to the mayor's report. Madam Mayor.
Right.
Or the city's words.
Not the gavel. Thank you. Um, so it's been a quiet two weeks since we last met. Um, one of the things I'll just touch on very quickly is that the Main Street project has started at the intersection of Longwell and Main and will proceed west on Main Street towards Pennsylvania. The Fall Fest parade was pretty amazing on Thursday. I'd like to say thank you to the Rec and Parks Department and the Streets Department for taking good care of me during the parade. I could not walk in the parade. Um, I think the decorations on the gator were over the top because especially when we were cruising through the neighborhoods after dark with the balloons on the gator. Uh, and one of my students told me that I had the best balloon in the parade. Um, it was a great crowd and there was so much positive energy. On Friday, Fall Fest was packed for the rigging years. Um, in fact, Snuggers Amusements kept the midway open longer than usual, so folks could get in and ride. The fire pits, as always, are a big hit. And I was thankful to have one a little bit back from the music. Um, and we had a phenomenal evening. Unfortunately, rain caused the activities for the rest of the weekend to be moved inside or canceled. And while I was sad to see Fall Fest shortened, I was also very happy to get a couple inches of rain over the weekend. Um, I know there's a lot of other Rec and Parks activities coming in October. I'm going to defer to Councilmember Ann Gilbert, our Chair of the Rec and Parks Committee, to report on those items a little bit later. Uh, just two other things of note that I have found interesting. Um, this week is with Daniel's Homecoming. So McDaniel has their homecoming events on Friday and Saturday. On Saturday, the women's and men's soccer take on, both take on F and M, and the football team takes on Gettysburg at one P M. So if you're in town, uh, you can head on up to the hill and enjoy some football uh, and some of the festivities at McDaniel College. I also wanted to call attention to a story NPR did within the last few days on Major General Jenny Burkhead. Uh, she is currently the only black woman leading the state military, and NPR did a great background article on her history and the items that helped shape her uh into the major general that she is today. And I know we all met her, I spent some time with her, and really enjoyed the Major General's company. And then last but not least, uh, we will hold trick or treating on Tuesday, October thirty first. Uh, and our time, we usually do that, is from six to eight P M. It's a trick or treat. We'll be on October thirty first. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now we'll move on to reports from standing committees. We'll start off with the Arts Council, Councilman Dayhoff.
We're continuing our work on the strategic plan um with the Arts Council. Um, if anybody's available for the movie on October the thirteenth, we will be playing the original nineteen eighty two version of Flight Runner. They will, they will be playing the director's cut. It's one of my favorite all time movies. Uh, that'll be my report.
Thanks, Mr. President. Economic and Community Development, Councilman Huff. I know what day tonight. Thank you very much. Finance Committee, Councilman, Council President, Pecoraro.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, the Finance Committee met last week. Uh, we are bringing to you later on the agenda for introduction uh, our first budget amendment um for the, for the fiscal year. Um, as all my colleagues will recall, we have adopted this practice on the recommendation of our city administrator rather than doing um kind of a roll up at the end of the year. We are, along the way, we are doing budget amendments to make sure that the budget always remains current uh with whatever additional spending we need to do or whatever additional revenues we're aware are coming in. So, uh, we'll be bringing the first of these two for the fiscal year uh later this evening, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to Personnel Committee again.
Uh, nothing to report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public Safety would be me. I'll give that up in front of me. I do have a report. Um, so I have a couple of items I want to report on quickly. On September eleventh through the fourteenth, Lieutenant Steve Arnold and Lieutenant Michael Donovan uh completed the Aspiring Leaders Professional Development Training Conference, which was sponsored by the Maryland Chiefs of Police Association. So that's wonderful. Great, great to get them that extra training, the job chief. On September twelfth, twenty three, Sergeant Huff and PFC Chinaki attended the Glock Armorer School, I'm a little jealous, which will add them to the list of staff able to help the department properly maintain our firearms platform. Um, four Westminster Police Department recruits continue their training at the Carroll County Sheriff's Office Police Academy, which began on the eighteenth, September eighteenth. The police academy training will span just over six months, and we certainly are looking forward to their successful completion to get them uh out here and working on the road. On September eleventh through the twenty second, Sergeant Laser, Sergeant Eckert, and PFC Hall successfully completed the Level One Crash Reconstruction School hosted by the Harford County Sheriff's Office. And I can tell you, because I went through that about thirty five years ago, that is a challenging course. So congratulations to all three of them for getting through that. Um, that is my report. Keep moving on. So we'll move on to Public Works, Councilwoman Gilbert.
Uh, phase one of the Main Street water main replacement job has begun. Phase one work has been focused at the intersection of Longwell Avenue and East Main Street, adding and replacing the valves. Phase two will start in the upcoming weeks. Um, all sidewalks and streets will remain open during construction. Please note that there will be notifications sent out when the water is shut down at time. Wait a minute, sent out when water shutdown times are determined. Read that correctly. Uh, please visit the city website if you have or need any more information. Um, the Streets Department over the past two weeks was focused on the preparation, the execution, and the cleanup of our forty fourth annual Fall Fest hosted at City Park, and they continue to dry out tonight. That's all I have.
Great. You can continue with the Recreation and Parks report, please.
Sure, and that's going to be a little longer. So, um, our Parks and Rec staff has been along with our Public Works Department, drying out and cleaning up from a very wet rainy Fall Fest. Um, at the same time, they're quickly moving um forward with preparation for the Oyster Stroll. It will be October fourteenth that I will talk about in a few minutes, and this will be Saturday, and Clock Tower dedication on the twenty first. But before I get to those, Westminster Fire Department's two hundred year of service celebration parade and antique fire muster um celebration will be October seventh, beginning at ten A M with the parade. Um, just want to make a note, this is not a city sponsored event, but a city supported event. Um, Oyster Stroll um is coming up, so please shop, slurp, and stroll for your downtown Westminster. Um, annual festival, um annual stroll, I shall say. Um, features local oyster farmers, live music, delicious food, and a lot more fun for an entire family. Um, the event is designed to raise awareness about the Chesapeake Bay farm where these oysters and highlights how Westminster is working to restore wild oysters back into the bay by working with environmental partners to create new oyster reefs from recycled oyster shells. Um, the next event will be the Halloween event. Um, that will be asking all our little ghouls, godlands, and pirates and princesses to join us in downtown Westminster for lots of activities, including games, crafts, live entertainment um on the Lucas Lane stage from three thirty to four fifteen, and again from five fifteen to six P M. And then we will have the rededication of the Clock Tower. And it looks like that will be October twenty first, around five P M during the spooky Saturday event, complete with ruby floats, fifties dance contests, and a special car show. Um, we will have events such as bubble gum bowling contest, the rubing cutting, and a twist dance contest. And the Back to the Future movie will be at six thirty at the Westminster Fitness Center. That's all.
Thanks very much. Move on to Technology Committee, Councilman Dayhoff.
No reports.
Thank you very much. Intergovernmental Affairs, Councilman Huff.
Uh, no report. Sorry.
When we want the council comments, we'll start off with Councilman Dayhoff.
No reports.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Um, I have nothing on Sunday. I think I.
Fantastic.
Councilman Huff, I'll be quick as all, not as well, it's a joy Fall Fest, even though it got rained on, we really needed the rain. So that's it. Thank you.
Great, and I, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Council President Pecoraro, do you have anything?
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. President, just to say that I'm sorry uh not to be with you all, and I'm even sorry that I got this uh this busted knee here, so, you know, I hope to see you all soon.
Wonderful. And I have no comments, so we'll move on to ordinance and resolutions, of which we have three this evening. The first one is the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty three dash oh six cannabis overlay district in ordinance of the mayor and county council of Westminster adopting a sectional map amendment to repeal the former medical cannabis overlay district and designate the boundaries of the new cannabis overlay for the purpose of establishing the appropriate locations uh for the designation of cannabis overlay floating zones permitting the operation of cannabis businesses in the city. Community Planning and Development Director Depot, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Great, then we'll go ahead and uh open it up. Uh, I'm sorry, let's get a motion on the table. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Tuckworth.
I'll second. Uh, well, motion made by Councilwoman Gilbert, seconded by Councilman Huff. Uh, we'll go ahead and open up the floor to any discussion. Uh, any members of the council, the mayor?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, we've had this before us for a little while and have had the chance to think about it, and also, you know, the chance to um see how it's operating and hear from the community a little bit. And one of the concerns that I've heard raised is from folks who are operating other businesses in the um, in the um commercial area, you know, on the east side of the city, where one of the um, you know, one of the zones is and where one of these operations is. And, and they've, they've been raising a number of concerns with me. And I'm wondering if um, we, we might want to, if it's possible even to rethink whether or not the cannabis uh overlay zone, you know, in, instead of just the medical zone, should exist in that area. Uh, whether there's anything we can still do about that, or, you know, how we ought to look about that. And I'm wondering if, uh, Mr. Depot, um, did the Planning Commission talk about that at all when they considered this, or, or, you know, did the staff have any comments on, on that?
The, the, the Planning Commission not have any comments regarding the two locations for the cannabis district. It's two primary locations. You have the northern one, which is primarily I R and P I zoned properties, and the southern or um eastern element that's business, a B business zone. So it's broken up into two primary locations that we provided. But again, the Planning Commission didn't have any uh comments. They again recommended to approve the cannabis overlay district as um as introduced.
Uh, Mr. President, if I could just ask, um, is it, of Mr. Depot and of the city attorney, is it possible at this point to um to just go with the, um, you know, the northern um, you know, area and remove the, uh, the commercial business area that's on the east side of the city as a permitted, you know, area for cannabis sales?
I am, I am not aware of any provision in the city code, and I just kind of looked through it very quickly anticipating this question. I didn't see anything that would prohibit you from removing that from the proposal if you were inclined to do so.
Um, I'll get to you in one minute, Madam Mayor. So, Council, Councilman, uh, Council President Pecoraro, um, I'm gonna go ahead and tell a few of the other members that may be weighing in on this, and then we can circle back and talk a little bit about maybe the direction we might head in in terms of, are we gonna pull this question or make some modifications? So, good, if it's okay, I'd like to have a little more discussion amongst.
Absolutely.
We want, so Madam Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you. And this is probably a question for our attorneys and Mr. Depot as well. If we were to pull the, the ordinance or change it so we don't include the eastern section there, would that close them?
No, they'd be considered a legal nonconforming use because they were established legally. So they can continue to operate in perpetuity, they just can't expand. Um, or if they were ceased to operate for, for six months exactly, they could not renew or come back again.
Can you repeat that last part?
So again, as a nonconforming use, if you cease to operate in that location for six months, you can't do a use of that property unless it meets the requirements of the ordinance. So another cannabis user could not come into that space and operate that use.
So it wouldn't halt the existing business?
It would keep them open, but no one else could take the, they couldn't even take the business over.
They couldn't even take the business over.
Just the business and keep it running, but they can't start another business.
They couldn't even take it. If they had to get a new license and, and change license from one user to another, that would be a change that would not be allowed. It's only the operator that's there today, and the license that it's operating today uh may continue to operate.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess I have two questions. So if someone purchased that business, they would then have to probably move to another location where it would be acceptable for them to operate. Is that correct?
Yes, if, if they were to move, they would have to locate into the northern portion, the P I or the I R district where we defined the overlay district.
And the second question I have is, what are the concerns? Um, I'm now just hearing that there's concerns, so I'm kind of curious as to what those concerns are.
I think you want to direct that to Council President Pecoraro.
If I can.
Um, yeah, let's, let's give Councilman Huff a chance also, and then we'll go back to Council President Pecoraro.
So, um, nonconforming use, though, if does that die when you, if you sell the business, like, if the business is still operating, if you sell the business, the nonconforming use still stays?
No, it's the, the, in this case, it's a little unusual because. No, it's the the, in this case, it's a little unusual because it's a specific license for this operation, this user, and this user was given specific approval by the Mayor and Common Council to operate at this location. So if they were to leave, anybody coming back in would have to be back before the Mayor and Common Council to establish their cannabis business at that location.
So i- in another scenario, not this particular kind of use, the non-conforming use would transfer, you you know, if I had a non-conforming use, typically if the ownership changes, the use is still exists.
Yes, it could, or or um if it was a little minor of a change of non-conforming, the border zoning appeals can always approve one, not replace one with another or just to reestablish that non-conforming use, so.
But this is different because of the specific type of use that we're talking about, which is the cannabis.
And the fact that they came specifically before the Mayor and Common Council and obtained the approval by the Mayor and Common Council and ordinance for that particular user and entity.
Yeah, it's my server review of my home, for example, is it not beautiful, the use of it sold a couple of times, but they've able to stay.
That's typically, yes.
Uh, Council President Peccararo, uh, Councilwoman Gilbert, I think I think asking specifically what some of the blames are, do you care to elaborate a little bit more on on that?
Uh, yeah, certainly, thank you, Mr. President, um, it's a good question. Um, the uh, I've had, I heard from some of the business owners, you know, that are in the um current um uh shopping center where the uh, you know, the establishment is located right now, that um, that having them there is pretty disruptive. That uh, they've got other concerns about uh, you know, the effect it's having on their businesses there um and the the way of the the shopping center is operating, so they asked if, you know, the mayor and council could do anything about it. Um, I was clear with them that we could not shut the business down, but that, you know, we could look at whether or not you know, we could prevent, you know, growth or or, you know, you know, other locations in that area, so as I thought about it, you know, I thought when we originally did this, one of the reasons, as I recall, that we, you know, wanted to allow the medical cannabis in that area, in that area, it was because it was located closer to, we thought that the business industrial area was, and I always got the zoning names, you know, wrong, Mr. Depot, won't forgive me, but um the um, when we talked about, you know, putting it over there, it made sense, it was an open area, you know, um away from, you know, residences and and lots of other businesses. When we allowed it in this other commercial area, one of the thoughts was that it was relatively near the um, this county sort of, you know, you know, medical campus, you know, the uh, you know, many of the counties, you know, central, you know, Carroll County's doctors are located near that area, the hospital's not far away and it made some sense, you know, for medical cannabis um prescriptions to be able to be dispensed out in that area. I'm not sure we thought it through enough in terms of the effect that it would have, you know, on that area as it switched to a different kind of sales, and so I think that's, you know, you know, as I heard from some of these business owners, it made me think that it was worth revisiting and making sure that we had a conversation about it before we made a final decision.
Thank you. I I have a quick question, what what is our time constraint or or what is, what 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 would put pressure on us to make this decision today versus potentially pulling this question, maybe throwing it back to committee and staff and and discussing this a little more? Wha- wha- what's the timeframe look like, in case that's the direction we wanted to head in?
Well, they're like dispensary, that's the one at seven hundred Corporate Center Court, they want to expand. And they cannot expand into an adjoining suite until this is approved. Um, when they got their approval from the Mayor and Common Council, it's a little unusual, but it was specific to a suite and that defined area inside of a building, not the property. So they have been wanting to expand for quite some time now and they've been waiting for this uh, this to move forward.
That's the Commerce Center.
That's the Commerce Center one, yes, the IRI district, or they're in the PI district and industrial.
Which is not the one we're really talking about, unfortunately.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I I'm I'm not speaking as the uh Council President Croatan, I'm just speaking as just one of the council members at this point. I think Councilman Peccararo does bring up some some concerns that really do relate to that specific location. And I will say my recollection, because I was cir- I was on council at the time when this came up as medical, is he's right, we definitely talked about that being a location that we we be good with because of its proximity to a lot of the other doctors' offices and and hospital relative to it versus the IR zone. Um, and I I think we didn't contemplate the fact that, we didn't know what the state was gonna do, they were making stuff up as it goes when they were passing a lot of these laws, and we had no idea what the direction was gonna be and certainly didn't know that they were just going to automatically grant recreational license to the medical licenses, which is what it seems like they've done. Um, I don't think we contemplated that four or five years ago when we did it, and I'm not sure we even contemplated it in in planning zoning committee um quite so much, but so I I I I'm kind of inclined to suggest maybe we pull it at least for one meeting and kind of figure out maybe the direction we want to head in. Um, let me put it back to committee, um, talk about it a little bit more and see if there's some way we can potentially accomplish what we're trying to do without necessarily completely shutting it down over there, but but maybe that's not possible.
Mr. President, I I guess that I have a couple of thoughts and I am, I haven't really thought about this either, but so, but um uh, you know, we would be making this other business a non-conforming use, okay, by pulling that area out. Um, and and also, you know, we're not just talking about pulling that one section out, we're talking about pulling everything off on that one side, okay? Um, and, you know, one could argue, and I I don't know the details of some of the disruptions, but you know, whether they're parking related or or what those disruptions are, but those can be somewhat site specific to that particular property, which could be somewhat of a, you know, a management or property owner standpoint uh uh as opposed to the underlying zoning of the area, so I I do feel like we, I don't I don't want to like, you know, I I would like us to have more time to think about this, but I also don't want to hold up, you know, uh, this other ju- so I don't know, and this is a question we're asking the the attorney. Um, is it possible that if we move forward on the map amendment that we have in front of us for the northern part, what I call the northern part, take off the southern part, can we revisit and add if we decide to add part of the southern part back in? Can we do another map amendment, or do we have to go through a whole nother ordinance? Is it best just from us uh, a reconsideration standpoint to pull it and then come back to this? Because we've already introduced the ordinance, so I'm kind of asking a technical question about what is the best way to do this, should we kind of pull this off the agenda for tonight and kind of relook at it and bring it back, or I'm looking for a little bit input from our attorney and staff. Our city administrator, hello?
Yeah. So from from my perspective, you've already introduced something and you're ready to act on it. Um, so if you remove a portion of it, then you'll have to come back with a whole new ordinance to add it back in, but.
It's just a map, though, because it's not the ordinance itself, we're.
Correct, it's the map, it it's the map that im- implements the ordinance that you had done previously. Now, um, a little bit ago I was asked about whether you could do that and under your um code, it appears that you can remove a portion of what was proposed and go forward with the rest. One of the things that I did since I've heard your discussion is pull up the state law about the cannabis, and there is some discussion about um not being able to establish reasonable, I'm sorry, unreasonable zoning requirements for cannabis businesses in this transition. If you um decide not to move forward with this tonight, I would like to be able to take a look at exactly if state law addresses this issue and has any bearing on it.
Which which makes sense, yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, you know, it would be my recommendation that, uh, you know, we postpone further consideration of this until the next meeting, I would think that that would give us a couple of weeks to uh look into the questions that uh Ms. Ruff um was raising as well as you know, give other council members a chance to learn more about the situation and perhaps, you know, um, you know, let others speak up on this, um. I don't, I mean, I I'm sympathetic to the concerns of the folks up on, you know, uh, in the northern location, but I don't think two weeks is going to, uh, they've waited a little while, two weeks is gonna, you know, damage their uh, their plans, I would hope not anyway, and it would give us the chance to make a more thoughtful decision.
Yeah, I I I tend to agree with you, uh, I think that probably would be, because I I think trying to amend it here and now would be reckless. Um, in my opinion at least, so we do have a a a, we have a question on the floor, so procedurally speaking, um we've got to get that question removed, so I guess we need a.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
But I I was, the way to do that, I would, I move that we postpone consideration of uh this item until the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone this until the next meeting, do we have a second? I'll say, okay, so Councilman Huff seconds, so we'll go ahead and call that question uh to postpone. So may I have a vote on Council President Peccararo's motion to postpone this question until our next meeting? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it looks like we have a split vote, I'm gonna go ahead and vote on this, even though I typically wouldn't, since I'm presiding, I'm gonna vote aye as well. So the, I, all all those that are nay, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, I don't believe you have voted, Councilman Dayhoff, are you abstaining or voting?
I was concerned that we already had a motion on the floor.
Do I need a vote, a yes or no, or an abstain?
I think we ought to postpone it because it injures the final point of state law.
So the ayes have it, we will go ahead and postpone until the next meeting. Thank you very much, we'll move on.
Um, thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah.
It does this need to go back procedurally, go back to economic and community development, because that was the committee that was looking at this?
So, the the motion did not necessarily tell us what to do next, but I think that's a fair question. Why don't we move that to new business, because I don't, we're under ordinance at this point. So we'll move that to new business, then we'll open a discussion up on the new business um related to this in terms of where as a group we think it should be referred back to, does that make sense to everyone? Okay, yeah, so then we'll continue on with our uh ordinance and resolution section, so I believe that moves us to item B, which is the adoption of ordinance twenty-two-three oh-seven Art Galleries and Studios Text Amendment in ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council amending chapter one sixty-four zoning and subdivision of land of the Code of the City of Westminster to amend article eight A C dash C Central Commerce Zone Section one sixty-four forty-five point two Article eight B and DB Downtown Business Zone Section one sixty-four four point forty-five point eight and Article nine C B bis- Central Business Zone Section one sixty-four forty-seven to add art galleries and studios. Mr. Depot?
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and get the question on the floor, may I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three dash oh-seven?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Dayhoff moves, I'll second, Councilman Huff seconds, questions on the floor? Does anyone have any comments or discussion related to the adoption of this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor of adopting ordinance twenty-three dash uh oh-seven signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it and the ordinance is passed, we'll move on to section C, which is introduction of ordinance twenty-three dash zero-nine in ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, Maryland amending the adoption, I'm sorry, the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning July first twenty-twenty-three and ending June thirtieth twenty-twenty-four fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Budget Amendment Number One, finance director Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city's fiscal year commenced on July first of twenty-twenty-three. In accordance with section twenty dash two of the Code of the City of Westminster, the city administrator prepared a budget for the mayor to present to the common council for consideration. Ordinance twenty-two-three dash zero-three approved in the budget for fiscal twenty-four was adopted on May eighth, twenty-twenty-three. During the remainder of this current year, the city willing to incur additional expenses that exceed the current appropriations and therefore additional appropriations are necessary. A summary of the proposed additions is included and the funding sources are as followed, follows, excuse me. Thirty thousand from capital projects, benefit assessment funds, seventy thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars, new intergovernmental funds for a state grant, forty-five thousand five hundred from sewer fund reserves and one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars from water fund reserves for total additional appropriations of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. The staff is recommending that the mayor and common council introduce the amended budget appropriations as detailed in ordinance number two oh-two-three dash zero-nine.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Uh, let's go ahead and get the question on the floor and then we can have questions and discussion to have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-three dash oh-nine.
I'll move this, President.
Okay, I've got, uh, fortunately, Council President uh Peccararo, you were second, so I'm second on that, Councilwoman Gilbert beat you to it, so she is the motion. Uh, let's go ahead and uh open it up for any discussion, questions, concerns or anything with this?
I have a question or two. So, um, um, water treatment chemicals, um, that was just an oversight, it appears to be, is that correct, does the?
That's correct.
Um, and then the uh sewer shed study. Um, it says fifty thousand in budget resulting in a shortfall of fifty-five. Uh, so the total amount of what we think that's gonna cost is one oh-five, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we have fifty in, but it, we're gonna be closer to one oh-five, hence we're increasing the budget to co- cover that.
Yes, the budget from last fiscal year included funds to cover this. We thought we would be finished by then and we're not, and somehow it didn't make it back in the final version from last year's uh when we were preparing the original budget.
Okay, got you, okay. And then the ADA improvements, those are improvements that were made into the forty-five West Main?
Yes.
Okay, okay. What are those in content, by the way?
Um, when the building was renovated, the front door was not um included with ADA. Um, you you can't open the door like you can everywhere else where you hit the ADA button. Um, a staff member can't access, the building itself is is a key card, the staff member can't access the building um other than when the building is open, but there are a variety of staff that work other than those hours, including a new staff member that we have that needs to access the building, uh but it's not accessible to that employee, so uh we need to make the building accessible from the front door. The back door um has a key card that you can ex- you can use, that's where most staff enter the building, that's where most of you enter the building, but as you know, you have to go up and down some steps um in order to get into the building from the back door, so if you're a staff member who needs to access the building outside of the normal hours from eight thirty to four thirty, uh you can't if you uh need an ADA opportunity, so.
So the the front door will now have a key card access?
Key card.
And also the push button that will automatically open the door?
That's correct.
Got you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that.
This should have from beginning, I'm not sure how we missed that. Any other comments? Uh, I'll just, one quick thing, uh being on the Finance Committee, uh back to the chemicals. It it that, just want to be clear on that, that is not money we would not spend otherwise, that's, we spend that every year on chemicals, it just did not, it was a technical error, not getting it into the budget. Was all that was.
Sure.
Not actual or anything like that. Okay, there are no other comments, let's go ahead and uh vote on the question, again, this is introduction of ordinance twenty-three dash oh-nine, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion is pa- uh, the ordinance is introduced, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business, I'm not aware of any unfinished business, does anyone have any unfinished business they're aware of? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business, we will I don't know if we have to amend the agenda in order to do this or not, um but we're gonna go ahead and have one item of new business, and that's to continue our discussion related to uh the adoption of ordinance twenty-three dash oh-six and cannabis overlay. Councilman Huff, you wanted to talk a bit about maybe what we're gonna do.
I think we just need to have, because we're we're putting this off until, you know, supposedly our next council meeting, but we need some sort of process in place about how we're looking at this. Um, so I I kind of feel like that was economic and community development. Um, so I, I kind of feel like that was economic and community development that originally looked at the ordinance. So I kind of feel like it should go back there and that there are specifics, uh, you know, uh, Councilman Pecoraro, if he could, you know, get us some or get staff information on what some of these complaints are, staff can check into it. We could have a conversation economic and community development and, and make them look at this specific issue that he's bringing forward and then make a recommendation back to council. That was my fault processed as far as maybe how this should work process wise. I'm open to other ideas here, but I think we need some clarity instead of just saying we're pushing it off the next meeting. Right, that's my fault. So, but I'm open to faults either from other council members or from staff.
So I'll give council members of the mayor a chance to weigh in on that and then I'll also ask staff if they'd like to. So does anyone have any additional comments to what Councilman Huff just said?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Um, so I tend to agree with, with Councilman Huff because I know we've talked about this uh in our ECDC meetings. Um, I, I would like to emphasize that I would really like to see it back on the calendar uh within two weeks so we can keep the um the business and the tech work uh moving along and not hold them up too much uh for this. But um I do think kicking it back to committee uh and then moving on from there through the process again, uh to just have a look at that. Mr. President?
Yes.
I would tend to agree. I hope that we uh approached this expeditiously because I don't think it's fair to the business who specifically asked um for the, for the, for this to be introduced to begin with, um to delay their um expansion. Uh, and I also kind of want to hear what the problem is as to whether or not it could relate to any other business currently um currently in practice or those in the future so that we can figure out what is the problem and would it then be reflected in another area in our community. So I'm kind of curious with that also, but my main concern is that we're doing this expeditiously for the other business. I don't think it's fair to them. Wait.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
If we could actually alter the um the ordinance to the behavior of that, the planning and zoning.
I would suspect it will. Yeah, I think if we made alterations to it.
And we'll have to have another.
We would have to come scratch, probably, right?
Which then would take it off in two weeks.
Yes. Uh, City Attorney?
There, the code does not require that that occur.
Okay.
The council could, but there's nothing that says that once the recommendation is made, if a change is made, it has to go back.
It's, it does have to go back.
Correct.
So it doesn't necessarily have to go back. Okay, so Councilman uh Dayhoff, you still have the floor. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, Mr. Pecoraro, I, I think we've done it in the past because the planning and zoning is a, is simply a recommendation to the mayor and council. So we can, we can change it.
That's.
Yeah, good, okay.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I would just add to that, that, you know, just remind everybody, we are legislators and this is legislating. That's what legislators do. Proposals come before us. We examine them. Sometimes we change them. Sometimes we don't. It's certainly within our purview to do that. And, uh, you know, I think this, you know, as information comes to us, it's a legitimate exercise of our, of our responsibilities. I think you know, two weeks certainly ought to be enough time, you know, for us to take a look at this. You know, hopefully, you know, Mr. Hoff and, and his committee are able to uh do that. I'm happy to cooperate in any way I can, you know, to share information with them, you know, and, you know, outside the meeting and encourage some of the folks who have, you know, raised their concerns to me to uh get in touch with, uh, you know, in a more formal way with the, with the mayor and council and and share their concerns. I think that'd be valuable. So, you know, I'll, I'll do everything I can to help make that happen as well.
Wonderful. So it sounds to me like we have consensus to go ahead and refer this back to the committee, have some discussion at committee level and then bring it back to council with a recommendation on how to move forward within two weeks. So it makes sense to you?
It makes, it makes sense our next council meetings, uh, October ninth. So it just means we need to be.
Yeah.
Now, you're allowed.
Yeah, well, you're on my committee, so very, very.
Yeah. So also, um, okay, we'll confer with staff after uh the meeting to kind of figure out how to
Yep.
uh handle this.
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right, wonderful. So.
Um, just a quick clarity, one, two, say two, because the, you know, when we bring it back, we could end up passing it the way it is right now or only take out a small section or take out that whole section. So, you know, that's all we, we have a variety of options to choose here.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it, okay, we'll keep moving on. So uh let's go ahead and move into departmental reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Dayhoff, this is a report from the fire department.
Their report.
Okay, I want to take a moment to thank um Lynn Griffith with the Arts Council and for hosting some of Fall Fest and she also in the Arts Council and pivoted on behalf of September Song with, and they held um sometime this summer, I think it was in August, actually. And they held um a sound of music there. That's not where that was supposed to be located. So um, of course, that's a building that the city owns, a city asset, city interest, and uh we certainly appreciate the um the partnership and the cooperation of the Arts Council. Okay, so let's talk about Fall Fest. Um, city staff spend weeks putting together Fall Fest weeks. Um, I mean, we start in January putting together Fall Fest and it is absolutely heartbreaking when we have to pivot because of the rain and unfortunately that pivot has to happen at the absolute last minute. And in this case, um, it happened multiple times because we thought we were going to get one kind of rainstorm. We ended up getting a different, slightly different kind of rainstorm that took place a little bit later. And when I say we, it's really the Recreation Department and Public Works Department. I heard such good things about Fall Fest from so many different types of people. It's such a beloved event. For me, the summer's not over until Fall Fest has occurred and I will die on that hill. Um, but you don't have to take my word for it. Our city clerk volunteered this year, uh and he'd like to give you just a minute of his perspective on that. Mr. Barber?
Thank you, uh Mayor Council. I have been uh in municipal government over thirty years, been doing recreational events since I was fifteen years old. I told Abby and her team, that was the best thing I've ever seen or been a part of. So um coming to Westminster, I'm like, that is the event to go to and all of the events, I'll uh enjoy myself like being there and it was a great event. Love it.
Thank you.
Thirty years of uh service, you've got some chops to be over there, comment like that.
Yes, I do. Yeah, thank you.
Enjoy it.
All right, so we will start with the Recreation and Parks Department. Ms. Gruber, who I'm sure is exhausted, is here to tell us about how Fall Fest went, but also in two more weeks, we've got another event coming up, so we'll talk a little about that. Ms. Gruber?
That is correct. I really don't feel like I need to say anything more about Fall Fest other than thank you all for your support um for coming out and actually experiencing it, not just talking about it. Every single one of you were there. Um, some of you, oh, most of you on multiple nights, so uh we really appreciate seeing you out there in support of the event and my staff really appreciates it too. And I know that um you all made a point to make contact with all of them and they felt um that their efforts were recognized and appreciated. And so that makes all the difference when you're working for such a huge goal and you're looking at, you know, degrading forecasts bearing down or on you. So it's hard enough to keep sort of their morale up. Um, but when everything contacts with you, they feel like even though they can't control the weather, um the amount of the festival that we were able to put out there was appreciated and that's very important. So um they are now working earnestly to get things put away, which has been very difficult because everything is trenched. Um, so we're drying things out and trying to get things packed up and put away so that we can shift gears into our event prep space and start pooling together uh oyster stroll. As we prep events, we are creating, you have a space where we start to stage everything and then we start to move it into vehicles and then we start to mobilize out onto the street. So it's a very systematic approach. Um, but we have to clear space before we can start for the next one. So don't stop by the building, I guess, is what I. It looks fair. Um, so other than that, that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions for the Recreation and Parks Director? Ms. Gruber, and you're on behalf of the city, please thank your staff for a job well done.
Absolutely. Thursday was awesome.
Sounds funny.
I'm Friday, I'm at Friday, I'm sorry, yeah.
Recreation and Parks Department certainly can't put that event on without the help of Public Works. Um, who is our, our behind the scenes workhorses for that and many other events. We will move on to the Public Works Department. Mr. Dick?
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Uh, so I'm gonna keep pretty short. Uh, most of it's already been talked about, the Fall Fest and uh our guys did a great job helping it. That's Gruber and the Ract Department on the pivot late Friday night to make sure we got everybody out of the city park so we didn't have any issues there with the rain coming in. So I really would like to thank them in a public setting for all the work that they put in for that. Uh, Main Street was touched on earlier. Uh, we actually have a progress meeting tomorrow morning, so hopefully by tomorrow afternoon, I'll have uh smart to the public about uh that uh project as well. And rather than, not the only other two things is we're getting ready for the oyster stroll, as was just mentioned by Abby, and finishing prepping for the leaf season. That's, you know, same for us.
I'm gonna be loading you up.
Are there any questions in the Public Works Department? Mr. Dick, on behalf of the city, please let your staff know. Uh, thank you for a job well done. All right, let's move on to the IT Department. We've been working hard uh to support the other departments in uh map layers and ways that we can tell the narrative of the departments through visually through maps. Uh, Mr. Mark?
Continuing to grow our GS department as far as our, the, the master remains of the stories we're telling, we're having more meetings with other departments and trying to find other ways to utilize those tools that we have. Um, I almost tell how helpful this city is to each other, the departments we have. We are involved in a lot of things that go on um such as the stroll, the technology they need, the wifi access. Um, you know, just going through those processes. It's fun to be involved in at least some way with everything. So it's, you know, we have the hires coming in the last two weeks, you know, make sure they have their accounts, their computers, everything ready to go for those things. Um, continuing to work on our cybersecurity initiatives, doing all of what we have. We're gonna try to save some money going into next fiscal year, and we're looking at some options to try to keep it level with support we have. We'll come in a lower policy, try to save some budget that way too. So those are the big issues we're working on right now.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the IT Director? Hearing none, we will move on to the Housing Department where we are busy with code enforcement. Mr. Brown?
Okay. Um, just to base your report on, we are continuing to move people off of our waiting list. Staff are bringing people in each day, uh giving them an opportunity to go out and find a house that they can afford. Uh, so that's moving pretty well. Uh, we're also working on this responding to general code uh compliance uh out there every day, uh making sure that uh we do what people do in order to ensure that the code is enforced. Other than that, we're just keeping and trying to move it. There's somebody else.
Are there any questions for the Housing Director? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Planning Department. Mr. Deepo?
Thank you. Um, on September twenty first, as already referenced, the Planning and Zoning Commission held public hearings on ordinance twenty twenty three oh six and oh seven. On October third, the Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled to vote to go into a closed meeting to consult with council to obtain legal advice regarding its responsibilities and the interpretation of the city code and review of applications and the application of the new rules and procedures. Also, um, scheduled to hear case number twenty three oh five. This is an application requesting approval of a variance to the setbacks of an accessory building pursuant to article twenty special provisions to make uh structural alterations to an existing garage at four sixty East Green Street. Also, case number twenty three oh six, this is an application requesting approval to change, and I referenced this, talked a little bit about this, to change an existing nonconforming use to another nonconforming use pursuant to article nineteen nonconformities section one sixty four, one thirty five B, and this is to operate an automobile body shop completely within the structure at two forty seven East Green Street. On October fourth, the Historic District Commission is scheduled to review the architecture of a four unit multifamily dwelling use at two eighty eight East Main Street. So we have gotten that project in. And also to discuss the rescheduling of the November HTC meeting due to a conflict with the heart with the annual Heart of Civil War Heritage Area meeting. And that completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions for the Planning Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the Finance Department. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Good evening. At our last council meeting, Mayor and Council, you approved uh a new audit firm for us. So I just wanted to report that we have met with that audit firm and starting our, started our planning for their fiscal twenty three audit. Uh, they will be back now on October sixth to meet with us and go through a walk through of our financial statements. Our plan at this time is to have field work completed in October for our um housing area and for the federal funds that we received and then, which is called a single audit. And then in November, we will plan on them working on a field work for our financial audit. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you for all your work putting together the budget ordinance. Are there any questions for the Finance Director? Moving on, we'll go to Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Um, this October first, there are not too many Maryland laws going into effect that affect the operations of the Police Department as they were last year. Um, this Saturday, we were invited to the annual first responder appreciation Bloom Mass at Saint John Church, which I will be attending. Uh, we're continuing our hiring process to fill our remaining sworn vacancies and our one dispatch vacancy. That's all I have to report. Is there any questions?
Are there any questions for the President? Okay, one final thing I wanted to mention is uh our Water Superintendent, Brian Grossnickel, is retiring at the end of this month, which is at the end of the week. I'm gonna thank him for his over eighteen years of service to the city. Um, and we want to announce that we have promoted um my drawings to position of superintendent. So we're very excited for that transition which begins tomorrow. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Moss before we move on? Okay, sir, are you with uh, Mateo?
No.
Okay, I apologize. He's a representative and I wasn't sure if you were, you know. Okay, so we'll move on to citizen comments. Um, let's see, the high level agenda, citizen comments, we invite the public to address the mayor and council uh on any issues that pertains to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. For citizens not attending the meeting, we invite them to send your comments or concerns. We email to comments@westminstermb.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commenters should include their address and phone number with their comments. We'll now go, we'll now move, uh, move forward to invite comments from anyone here present this evening. I remind you that this is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts and concerns, and it's not an exchange or debate, or we do not, we will not answer any questions. Uh, we just will listen to what you have to say and then potentially confer with staff or ourselves uh before a response given. Um, also, uh, I encourage you to keep your remarks brief and to the point if possible, and please give your name and address when you make your comments. So would anyone like to have uh an opportunity to make some comments at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is uh Don Silverstein. I'm here representing the individual seven hundred K Corporate Center Court. Uh, we were very interested in the ordinance twenty twenty three oh six. I enjoyed things I heard tonight as well, which I had gone to Fall Fest now. I first off want to thank Mr. Depot and his office. They've been incredibly helpful, um incredibly responsive and forthcoming about the issues. Um, you know, and getting, getting us moved forward. I want to thank the council, um, the council's president, Pecoraro, for their comments. Um, obviously disappointing the news tonight. Um, uh, you know, I'm not sure about, I don't think it's our facility. It seems to be presenting the issues. It seems like it's the other facility, but to the extent we can um facilitate or assist in any questions or any comments that anybody has, please feel free to reach out to myself. Um, Mark has my info. I'm happy to give it to, give it to anybody. Um, you know, Veralife has been an upstanding member of this community for a long time now, and they're really just trying to move from one suite to another. So um, you know, whatever we can do to make that happen, we would like to, that to happen in, in two weeks is what I heard. So um and we've been working on this with Mark's office since the end of July. So um you know, again, to, to move it as expeditiously as possible would be great. Thank you.
Appreciate the comments. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing no other comments, uh, we'll go ahead and uh talk about our next meeting, which is going to be held on oh my God, I have the wrong date written down here. When is our next meeting? Oh my God, I have the wrong date written down here, when is our next meeting, October nine? Uh, so we'll meet on October ninth, seven PM right here, and without objections, we are adjourned.